Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. So, welcome, welcome to this Waxaw Board of Commissioners meeting this November 26th, 2024. I'd invite everybody to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence to give thanks and praise.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have any modifications, adjustments, or amendments to the agenda? Hearing no such modifications, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is so adopted. Next up, we have public comments. I would just like to remind folks, there's been a reminder of the policy and the actual rules here. The public hearing for conditional rezoning 00005 2024 regarding the atrium project, that public hearing has been closed, so public comments cannot be considered regarding that particular project. If you are here to make public comments, they must remain general in nature. Again, your comments have to remain general, not specific to atrium. That public hearing has been closed. So if you're here to make public comments, you've got three minutes. Please keep them polite, and please keep them broad and directed to the board as a whole. First up, we have Maria Richardson.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Maria Richardson. I live at 2904 Bidwell Avenue in Keratin. Smart balanced growth is crucial for Waxaw. Currently, eighty-nine percent of our property taxes come from residential properties with only eleven percent from commercial sources. This imbalance places a significant financial burden on residents. Diversifying our tax base by attracting businesses and employment centers will not only reduce this burden, but also make sure Waxaw, excuse me, will also make Waxaw more sustainable in the long term. However, there are much bigger issues that need to be addressed before we approve more development in this town. Right now, there are thousands of residential units already approved but not yet built. Meanwhile, the widening of Providence Road, the backbone of our transportation system, isn't scheduled for completion until 2029. Adding more housing without improving our infrastructure will only worsen congestion, compromise safety, and decrease quality of life for our current residents. Before considering any new developments, we need a clearer plan for managing this growth responsibly, including ensuring our infrastructure can support it. I urge the Board of, uh, the Board to revisit Waxaw's land development codes, particularly regarding interconnectivity. The requirement for roads through neighborhoods continues to be a major point of contention. While interconnectivity might sound like a positive idea, in practice, it often reroutes traffic through quiet communities disrupting safety and character. These codes need to be revised to priori- prioritize neighborhood integrity over creating cut-throughs for traffic avoidance. This is a pivotal decision for Waxaw tonight, one that will set the tone for how we balance growth with preserving the character of our town. I trust that you'll consider not just the immediate proposal, but all the long-term implications for our infrastructure, our tax ba- tax base, and our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Christina Moberach.
Good evening, Waxaw Mayor and Town Commissioners. I wish you and your family a blessed Thanksgiving, and I'm so grateful to live in this wonderful town and appreciative of this opportunity to speak this evening. I just want to bring to your attention that I urge you tonight to vote responsibly for sustainable growth, ensure no connectivity to neighborhoods in general in Waxaw, and the subject of connectivity in the future, and revisit Waxaw's overall growth plan to ensure the future of our town reflects our shared vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rachel Collins.
Good evening, Commissioners. I had prepared a different statement, but I would just like to say that I am in support of what my neighbors have already said, and would also urge you to make these same considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe this is Beatrice Rotuzzo? Or is that her name? Did I get it right?
Happy Thanksgiving, ladies and gentlemen, if ever timed to celebrate family and community. Keratin is one such community with friends and family that cherish its quiet intimate residential spaces. Our diverse residents enjoy the liberty of its streetscapes that are pedestrian-oriented, and its environmentally friendly ponds which have many times visited by herons, geese, and hawks. Its many landscaped, its many meditative walking trails, as well as its well-maintained clubhouse, all due to our paying HOA fees. By allowing commercial elements into residential spaces, the many impacts are often irreversible, with the potential of disruption, disruption to our quiet neighborhoods. We already experienced residential parking issues, light intrusion, and increased vehicular traffic which have people often racing through the development, and the potential of devaluation of property because of its lost aesthetic value. Please give thought to quality development that gives sufficient consideration of impact on our environment, on our community, and on our residents. Developers come and go, but it's the residents that have to live with the consequences of negative growth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next up, we have Steve Garrett.
I'm Steve Garrett. I'm the Director of Real Estate for Atrium Health. I don't have any comments tonight. Just wanted to let the Commissioners know if you have any technical questions before the vote tonight, I'll be happy to answer any of them. Thank you.
Thank you. With no further comments, we will close the general public comment session. I'd like to get a motion now to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nope. All right, the consent agenda is so adopted. Next up, we have recognitions. Nick Bonwig.
Mayor, Board, uh, Town Clerk, and, uh, Town Manager, it's my honor to present Matt Fauconberry, the Town's Assistant Technology Director with his 10-year service award. I'm Nick Bonwig, the IT Director, and, uh, this for me is pretty special. So, a couple highlights about Matt. Matt started with the town back in November of 2014. He began as a Systems Administrator, then promoted to a Technology Systems Manager, and now most recently promoted to Assistant Technology Director. A few years back, he even became a Reserved Police Officer, uh, which is no simple task. Uh, now he even heads up the Town Drone Team, which is pretty neat as well. Uh, and he also serves as a Wellness Committee Team Member and the Employee Culture Committee. So, I honestly can't see anything good about him. So, uh, because describing him, I'd have to use the word great and everything. So, he's phenomenal. I, I'm very lucky to have him. Uh, he greets everybody with a smile. He won the Sunny Spawn Award, which among our entire staff is the most prestigious and respectful award nominated by our own employees. So, it's, it, from within, i- it's one of the best honors that any of us could receive. He encourages everybody to eat healthy and exercise. Um, I understand he's the strongest and fastest and smartest officer on the force. Is that right? He, he wrote half this. Um, so, but, without further ado, uh, Town's very lucky to have him, and so am I. So, Mr. Matt Fauconberry.
I, I have nothing good to say either, so, but, but thank you. Now, seriously, this has been the, the most rewarding, um, career I've ever had. Uh, look forward to many more years, uh, with the great staff. Uh, our HR team and town leadership has done a phenomenal job building a great culture around here, so just glad to be a part of the team. Thank you.
Happy to have you, Nick. And you, Matt?
Alrighty. Next up, we have Chief Dex Wilson.
Good evening. I would like to second everything that Nick said. Nick's a good guy, but Matt's great. Uh, thanks, Nick. Uh, tonight, we'd like to recognize Kevin Gasser, uh, for ten years of service with Waxaw PD. He left NYPD, came to North Carolina, and I, I know at times all law enforcement are crazy, but he's especially crazy. Uh, did over twenty years at NYPD, and then said, "I've not had enough yet. Let me go to Waxaw PD and work for another ten years," and I hope I've got him for a lot longer. Uh, he started his career at Waxaw PD on patrol, then he went to, uh, Animal Control, uh, and then over to, uh, teaching dare at the schools. Most recently, the schools have, uh, brought him on as a School Resource Officer, as well as a dare instructor. So, uh, we can't say enough good stuff about Kevin and what he's done for the town. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you guys very much, uh, Chief, Assistant Chief, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, I really, I really want to thank the most is the community because what, serving you guys has been a pleasure for the last ten years, so thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, we have no presentations and no public hearings, so we will move off to old business. Mr. Blair Israel, come on down.
Thank you, everyone. It's good to be back, to talk about atrium again. I know y'all are getting tired of it. Um, but, and everyone is very familiar with the project already, but I just want to briefly go through the slides to make sure that everyone knows what we're talking about tonight. So, this is a conditional rezoning petition of atrium Waxaw. Uh, there we go. So, there's the petition number. It's requested by Waxaw Associates, uh, the Michael's Organization for the Conditional Rezoning, which involves a map amendment, uh, amendment of the zoning map, uh, for the parcel located 2700 South Providence Road. That's, uh, just down the street from the atrium and right next to the helipad. Uh, its current zoning is Employment Center, which you can see in purple there. That's a zoning map, uh, just a portion of our zoning, our current zoning map. So, you can see right now it's Employment Center. The property's, uh, fourteen point eight acres, and, um, uh, it is also designated as Employment Center in the Waxaw 2040 Comp Plan Future Land Use Map. So, here's a little more information about the, about the current zoning and proposed zoning. You can see the current zoning there in Section 4.1.8. That's one of the pages from the Land Development Code. It gives a lot of quick detail about what Employment Center is and what it's meant for. Um, but, uh, what I've circled there is the note about residential, um, residential uses within Employment Center, which are allowed, but they're, uh, permitted through the conditional rezoning process which we are in tonight. Uh, conditional rezoning, I just want to remind everybody, it's a site-specific design with conditions that are mutually agreed upon by the town and the applicant. So, usually with the rezoning or any construction, you, you might not see an actual plan until construction documents and plat are submitted, but in this case, that conditional rezoning plan has to be agreed to. Um, so again, I just want to underscore, one of the things about that the Land Development Code says is that exclusive housing developments will not be considered until non-residential uses are well-established in the Employment Center or Employment Center area. So, whoops, I think I went, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. So, I want to compare that conditional rezoning, or actually, we first want to take a look at what, what that means in contrast to what it would be as a by-right zoning. In other words, if it wasn't a conditional zoning and they just wanted to, somebody wanted to develop an Employment Center, uh, for this particular lot, here's what we're looking at. Uh, under Employment Center zoning, first of all, again, it doesn't involve, uh, going before the Board. Um, the, there's no density limit. There are other limits on how the property can be constructed, of course, or how the property can be developed, but there's no actual density limit. The lot coverage is a seventy-five percent maximum, so just think seventy-five percent of that fourteen point eight acres. The height maximum is actually up to eighty feet or six stories, um, which is, you know, considerably taller than the current hospital. Uh, and in EC, uh, on purpose, there's, there's minimal design standards. There are design standards for all the different zoning districts, but for EC, those design standards are very lax because of the commitment of Waxaw to try to bring in employment. Um, so that's Employment Center by right. And so, taking a look at this particular property, a total site acre of four point eight, um, if you subtract the buffers and the setbacks, which we'll get a little glimpse of in the plan, uh, there's a tree sa- required tree save of twenty percent, open space of ten percent, those all need to be factored in. Uh, the buildable area would come to about eleven point one acres, eleven acres. So, and it's impossible to say what the approximate build-out would be of an actual development because that's very design-dependent, but we figure about a one hundred thousand square foot, uh, office building or any kind of employment-related building. That's what would be expected. And you can see there, circled in the red here is, are the primary uses that are expected or, uh, that Employment Center zoning is for. You can see a number of uses there, whether it's manufacturing, industrial, R&amp;D, um, office parks, things like that. The full table of uses, I mean, the full number of uses there is in the table of uses in the Land Development Code. That's just some, some primary examples. So, here we see the conditional plan for, um, atrium Waxaw. The site data, I, we've, we've reviewed all this, but I'm just gonna point out that this is, this plan, it shows everything that a conditional zoning plan is supposed to show. It's not extremely detailed, but you can see basically, you know, how the buildings are laid out, with the parking, the open space, the access, um, tree buffers, pedestrian routes. So, it has that kind of information. And also, um, you can see the, the existing grades and proposed grades were also provided in the conditional zoning packet, just not on this particular plan that I'm showing you here. Uh, we do that to just see that the, that the grading works, that the, that the proposed grading of how you would have to fit the property, uh, the, the development on the land is thought out. It's, and they consider the grades. So, initially, there are the site conditions that were added to the plan. You can see these five here. These were presented at the public hearing and also our previous meeting, um, where it talks about the maximum height. Uh, very specifically in this building, the, the height, um, shall be such that it would not be any higher than the existing hospital. And that includes not just the height of the building, but also how it's graded on the land. So, that when you see it, if it were to be developed, it would look like, you know, just like the hospital in a sense, uh, not in style, but in, in height. Uh, the second one, applicant shall work with the adjacent property owners to identify and install six-foot private, privacy fence where needed. Um, that's going to be specific to each property and, and the trees that are out there now. There might be, in many cases, in much of the case, sufficient, um, sufficient trees and shrubs where you don't want to tear things down and build a fence to do what those initial plantings were doing all along. So, that's gonna have to be determined, field-determined, but if it's needed, it's going in. So, and that would be along the, the western and southern portions of the site where it abouts, um, residential. Pedestrian crosswalks were part of the deal as well, and, um, associated signs with that. This would be at the intersection of Sunset Hills and Providence Road. Uh, this crossing would go across, uh, is intended to go across NC-16, um, in particular because it, it helps make a pedestrian connection for these homes to the existing commercial that's largely across the street. So, it's a very practical place. Of course, that's gonna be contingent on NC DOT, but it seems like a, a likely place where they would allow a, a crosswalk. We don't know till we get there. Can't cross that bridge till we get to it, but, um, that is one of the conditions. Further, number four, stamped asphalt, high-visibility pavement markings and such. What this means is the crossings within the parking lot, the pedestrian routes within the parking lot are gonna be well, uh, indicated. And that's something that we require in the ordinance anyway, but there's a special emphasis here, just to make sure that those, those, that pedestrian linkage is there, and then it's not just, you know, you're not just walking through a big black parking lot. It's not gonna be like that. There's gonna be actual trees, of course, and, and these crossings would be well, well indicated. And let's see, finally, on this, um, again, these were just the original site conditions. The easements for access to the property, those are necessary, of course, because the existing roads there are private roads of atrium. Uh, we can, you know, if there's a lot of questions about that tonight, we certainly have the right people here to answer those questions. Okay, so, oh, I think, I thought I had skipped one. Let's see. Yeah, okay, so what I just read to you, I'm sorry, these were additional site conditions. Uh, the original ones that were on, originally on the plan, it just skipped ahead. Um, of course, it's a hundred and ninety, age-restricted multifamily dwelling. There's no connection to Bidwell with any kind of paved, uh, trail or, or road. Um, no building should be closer than two hundred and twenty feet, and then there's a fifty-foot, um, tree buffer. Uh, you can see that in the, in the bottom areas along there. There's the buffer, and then along here. Um, residential units are age-restricted to age fifty-five. Uh, the minimum of one point four eight acres, that's a tenth, and that would be for the open space. So, those were the original site conditions. These are ones that have been added, that I just already went through, uh, have been added, um, since that meeting. There were two additional ones that were requested by the Board, and they are, um, build and ensure the commercial piece, um, or make sure that it's well-established. Uh, seventy percent occupancy was a number that was thrown out there before the residential piece. The applicant is here tonight. They can answer to that, but I'll just read the answer that I understand them to be, um, sticking with, and that is, uh, that the applicant is unable to commit to building the office first, as mandating this phasing would make the project financially unfeasible. Developing the residential first helps offset the cost of the site work, making the office portion more viable for the site. The majority of the land and development costs associated with the residential portion of the site. So, I can let them go into more detail about that if there's going to be discussion. Uh, finally, um, there was a request by the Board to exclude the retention pond from the calculation of required parking, uh, of required parkland, or open-spaceland, I should say. Uh, it's not parkland in that it won't be public parkland that our parks and recreation would take, uh, would, would take care of. It's just that it's public open space and available to the public. Of course, it's mostly gonna be used by the residents because it's right there. Um, so, but the, the request was that the, the area shown on the plan would instead be, would not be counted toward open space, and that would be handled by a fee in lieu. I'll back up just a second so you can see on the plan, this is the area we're talking about. That's an existing retain- uh, retention pond or detention pond, uh, for rainwater runoff. And what they're talking about doing is having a, a path that goes around it, and probably, uh, some benches or a few other items that are spelled out in our Land Development Code as to, you know, if you're going to count that as public open space, you have to have some features. Then make it nice to visit and, and sit and maybe have lunch or whatever. Make it a destination. So, those, those items are in the Land Development Code, and, and the reason we have this, we know retention pond is maybe not the ideal open space, but it can be. Um, there are many, there are many examples of various office parks and such where they have beautiful ponds, um, and, but you, if you understand what's going on, it's, these are serving the function of retaining the, the runoff water as well. So, it's a dual function. We want to encourage that in Waxaw because we know those detention ponds are gonna get built anyway, and that's, you know, that's the result of our, our Department of Water Quality and what they require of these developments. When you have, um, you know, the amount of impervious area, you're adding all this impervious that used to be trees, so there, the water needs to go somewhere because it's not being absorbed by the, the landscape. So, those detention ponds are necessary. We want them to be nice. We don't want them to be ugly. And so, that's why we have that in our Land Development Code, to try to pretty them up. And we say, "Okay, your incentive for doing that is so that you can count it as open space." So, that's the reasoning behind it. In this case, um, the applicant calculated the payment in lieu for that space. In other words, if they don't count that as open space, but they do a payment in lieu, their calculation was about a million dollars. And their statement is that a contribution, that contribution is not proportional to the scale of development. Uh, again, that may be a point of discussion that they, that you all can be involved with, with them. So, let me just finish up here. Uh, the reasonable and consistency statement, what we have suggested here, that the request is reasonable in the public interest as the parcel is adjacent to other existing Employment Center property, uh, and as complementary uses along a major road corridor, which is a commercial corridor, uh, and it will provide diversity to the tax base. Um, and some of that is figured not just by the use, but also by the type of residential. There are residential densities that do pay back. They do, we do get a net gain, um, in, in tax value. Uh, one of the properties that's of the highest I'll back up just a second so you can see on the plan. This is the area we're talking about that's an existing retain, retention pond or detention pond for rainwater runoff. And what they're talking about doing is having a, a path that goes around it and probably some benches or a few other items that are spelled out in our land development code as to, you know, if you're going to count that as public open space, you have to have some features that make it nice to visit and, and sit and maybe have lunch or whatever. Make it a destination. So those, those items are in the land development code. And, and the reason we have this, we know retention pond is maybe not the ideal open space, but it can be. There are many, there are many examples of various office parks and such where they have beautiful ponds and, but you, if you understand what's going on, it's, these are serving the function of retaining the, the runoff water as well. So it's a dual function. We want to encourage that in Waxaw because we know those detention ponds are going to get built anyway. And that's, you know, that's the result of our, our Department of Water Quality and what they require of these developments when you have, you know, the amount of impervious area. You're adding all this impervious that used to be trees, so there, the water needs to go somewhere because it's not being absorbed by the, the landscape. So those detention ponds are necessary. We want them to be nice. We don't want them to be ugly. And so that's why we have that in our land development code, to try to pretty them up. And we say, okay, your incentive for doing that is so that you can count it as open space. So that's the reasoning behind it. In this case, the applicant calculated the payment in lieu for that space. In other words, if they don't count that as open space, but they do a payment in lieu, their calculation was about $1 million. And their statement is that a contribution, that contribution is not proportional to the scale of development. Again, that may be a point of discussion that they, that you all can be involved with, with them. So let me just finish up here. The reasonable and consistency statement, what we have suggested here, that the request is reasonable in the public interest as the parcel is adjacent to other existing employment center property and as complementary uses along a major road corridor, which is a commercial corridor. And it will provide diversity to the tax base. And some of that is figured not just by the use, but also by the type of residential. There are residential densities that do pay back. They do, we do get a net gain in, in tax value. One of the properties that's of the highest value from a tax perspective is the Ardmore Apartments downtown. So it's the lower density development that usually, you know, won't have that kind of return, but higher density can have that return. It's not just about use. So just to make that clear. So also, and it's consistent with the Waxaw 2040 Comprehensive Plan by furthering the development of employment centers in accordance with the, also with the 2020 Collaborative Growth Strategy. All those things were, all those documents were driven by, by public input. So tonight, the requested action is either a motion to approve, a motion to approve with modifications, whatever's worked out tonight, or a motion to deny. So that's my presentation. You've heard it three times now, and I know you've done a lot of thinking about it, but I'm here to answer any questions at this point, or the, or the applicant is.
So just to kick off, approval with modifications, that would be the 12 items that you listed?
Well, those are already, that's a good question. I mean, they're really already considered part of the, of the plan now, the ones that have already been agreed to. That's usually if there are things decided at the meeting, such as tonight, that you, that everyone decides everyone's okay with, and they just say, okay, we'll just make those changes and we're good. So that way we don't have to come back again.
So then to summarize, it, it sounds like we have 10, five from the initial public hearing, five that were additionally added, and then two, one being not so doable, the make the commercial first, and then the fee in lieu. It sounds like we're going to get a little extra on that. So those 12 items are essentially baked into the, what would be an approval for as is at this point.
Well, if I can clarify, the, the 10 items are, and then those last two, the applicant is saying they can't do. So just to make that clear.
No, that's, and that's why I'm trying to make it clear so everybody knows kind of what we're all voting on and what we're all looking at. Okay. Questions for the board?
I have a question. Earlier today, we received an email from Bridget Grant regarding the concession agreements that they made and just some clarification on the building height. It's no more than five feet taller than the hospital, which is still less than what is allowed in the EC zoning of six stories, but just wanted to clarify from Ms. Grant or whoever that that's what is the agreement.
Okay, that's a detail I missed. Okay.
Is that correct? Okay. Another question I had, something that came up at the last meeting, if Chief Wilson could come to the podium. There was mention of the amount of officers that would have to be added to if this was approved, and it was mentioned that there would be, have to be 12 officers added. And so I want to question that, how that number comes up. Is that correct?
Sure. What's your question?
Well, is, is, would it require 12 officers for a 190-unit apartment building?
No.
How many officers would it be for, say, if there was two occupants per unit?
Two times 190 would be 380. So yeah, it would take half an officer.
So that's it, a half an officer?
Right.
Thank you. And just to clarify that, the point I made at the last meeting was that I was considering everything that's coming. And so with everything that's coming, to be prepared as a town, Adelina, everything, what number would you land on? I think I said 12?
I need a big calculator. So from my understanding, there's approximately 4,500 new residential coming in, correct?
Yes.
So with that 4,500, you would have to average three or four people per household, and then you would want one officer per at least 700. So it's between 500 and 700 is the national standard. I base ours off call volume, length of calls, arrest, all of those factors into it, and I factored, we would need one officer per 700 residents.
Okay. But we're talking about this project that we're approving, not the entire town of Waxaw.
But even with that, but even with those officers, however many this number is or is not, it is not all coming.
No, I didn't say that.
Right now, and even if it comes over the next five, 10, 20 years, with the number of people that we already have in the town of Waxaw and where we are now, we are still on a path to continue to increase our staff members as needed for what we need to do here in the town.
I hope so.
Okay. I have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just, I'm trying to clarify all this. So then we received some emails today regarding the tax value. Our town man, interim town manager, just, I was going to ask him if he could just clarify what exactly the taxable value is. We received, I think this is a document from the development team stating that their project would generate $306,075, whereas a buy right $100,000, I mean, 100,000 square foot building would be 190,000. So that this 40,000 square foot would generate more tax income. And is that, can you further explain that for us, please?
I think what they're saying here is if you just put a 40,000 or a 100,000 square foot office building on that property, their estimate of the tax payment would be $190,000 a year. If you do a 40,000 square foot office building and the 190 residential town units, their estimate again is that the, the tax payment would be $306,000. So it, I mean, it would be about $116,000 more worth than just a standard office building on the property. There were some questions about the value of apartments and the, let's see, Union County Taxor Sisters Office ultimately sets the value on that building. When you do reevaluation every four years or every eight years, the county board of commissioners have to adopt a set of values. And if you go on their website, that set of values they adopted is a, about a 130-page document. So it's, it's a very complex process. But they do treat businesses and industrial property different than they do a standard home. So those values for, you know, business properties, industrial properties are normally at a higher value than it would be if it was a single-family home. The tax rate is always the same. You don't have a separate tax rate for business properties, and it's a separate tax rate for single-family homes, but you do have different value sets that they base those on. I don't know if that answered your question or if there's a whole lot of rambling, but...
That's helpful.
Well, what's the point of talking about revenues all the time and no concern of cost to serve, right?
I don't even understand that question. I mean, I, I asked the chief to tell us how many officers would need to be added. I don't know where you're coming from with anything else.
The cost of services, the cost that the, of the services that the town provides, that the county provides. So, you know, it's like an analogy to a business, right? If you have a business that has a certain amount of revenue, you don't only look at revenue, you determine your profit based on revenue minus expenses, right? So we should try to do the same thing.
But we don't know that cost to serve because we haven't had that report yet.
Exactly. We don't know.
So to, to make assumptions that, that it, that the cost to serve is greater than the tax revenue, I just think that's miss, that's...
Well, why would we assume it isn't? We don't know.
We wouldn't. So why are you even...
We don't know. We're making a decision in ignorance here.
It's not, it's when we're, when we talk about tax rate, and I know on your, your blog that you've mentioned how we need more commercial than residential, then we're getting that, so...
Yeah, but we're continually saying yes to residential, continually making excuses for not having more commercial. The justification given for accepting the EC condition of a built-in, well-established business has been sort of justified by saying, well, there's the hospital next door that's well-established. Well, that hospital is owned by a nonprofit and it generates zero revenue for us, so why would we consider that?
Would you have that same argument with a church, then? A church doesn't pay those, pay those, those taxes either. Is that your same opinion?
Well, the opinion, I think, is that we won't use it as an established commercial use.
No, that's not what Commissioner Don said.
Well, that's, well, that's what was said at the last meeting, that we should use this as...
That's not what he said.
Well, I'm clarifying what I'm going to say.
Okay. You're speaking for him, then.
And I'd like to say...
No, you speak for yourself.
It's not to disparage nonprofits, but if you're going to use this property as a reason why we don't need to have well-established commercial, you know, it's not a commercial piece of property really in terms of tax. So if you're using that justification, it just doesn't wash. I'm sorry. But we understand that the property is valued higher as a result of being an apartment building. And we understand that this particular developer has gone to extraordinary lengths to accommodate the community.
Well, I'm not taking away from that. They absolutely have, and that's wonderful that they were able to do that. I guess I've prepared some, some comments I've just written down, and I'll just read those because there's a few and I don't want to forget. You know, "When considering the argument that we should approve this project to prevent the possibility of something worse being built in the future, I believe it's an equally valid, if not stronger case, for the idea that something better may emerge if we hold off and avoid unnecessary compromises now. I understand the applicant's point that prioritizing commercial development before residential is not financially feasible at this time. However, our primary responsibility is to the tax-paying citizens of Waxaw, and we must be diligent stewards of their money. By choosing to prioritize residential development over needed commercial space, which places an undue burden on the town's resources and forces us to serve our citizens at a deficit, we risk neglecting our duties, maintaining an 89-11 residential-to-commercial ratios unsustainable without either raising taxes or cutting services in the future. I cannot support tax increases resulting from poor fiscal decision-making, nor can I endorse service cuts that would harm both our residents and our staff. These are not abstract concepts, and they're real-world consequences for what we must carefully consider. We must hold this applicant and any future applicant for the site to the current zoning regulations, which prioritize commercial development first. In addition, commercial development not only brings in property taxes, but it also brings sales tax and franchise tax, which we would be missing out on."
And then make a motion to deny the conditional rezoning CD 5-2023 for Atrium Waxaw.
I was going to make a point.
All right. The motion has not been seconded, so we can take more questions.
Earlier today, we did receive a letter from Atrium that I'd like to read for the record. "I am writing on behalf of Atrium Health to confirm that Atrium is contractually bound to the Michaels Organization to provide closing access agreements to our private roads that access both Providence Road and Gray Byram Road. The land is currently part of our overall parcel, and we believe that the active adult and additional medical office space is complementary use to our campus that first opened in 2009. We have been thoughtful in our approach to selling our excess land, consulting with the Town of Waxaw planning team, and choosing a developer that we thought would both meet the approval of the town and be complementary to our existing use at that location. We value our relationship with the Town of Waxaw and will certainly abide by decision of the board regarding the proposed zoning. Signed, Bennett Thompson, Vice President of Atrium Health, Real Estate Services, Atrium Health."
Any further questions or comments from the board?
I have one more about the retention pond. Is that just still water or is that moving water or what?
Good evening. My name is Eddie Moore with McAdams. We are the design firm assisting the applicant. The detention pond, it serves two services. It holds the storm water, then it treats the storm water and slowly releases the storm water. So there's always a fluctuation of the, the height. And that, that particular facility was designed to accommodate this piece of property as well.
Okay. I was just curious because as I look at the Lowe's retention pond, that's not someplace I would like to sit and pass time with its algae blooms and mosquitoes.
So when we sent the letter, I think Blair missed the update that I sent that had the commitments that it would be within five feet of each, of the height of the hospital, that we would make sure that the crosswalks we were referencing, Commissioner Don did specifically speak to crossing Providence Road. The other thing that we included was a commitment for the trail area to be amenitized in a way that meant the intent of the LDC. We really value that open space for our residents. We, we've estimated that from the front door of, or from the door of the proposed senior housing, to do a loop and come back, which I know is very popular sort of movement to be able to get that exercise, is to make it an amenity. And so our intent is benches, landscaping, or anything else that's going to improve upon that area. We value it.
Regarding the crosswalk, you know, we know that NC DOT is encouraged when some of the cost is given to them upfront.
That's correct.
So just the specifics of your commitment there, you know, are you willing to put forward payment in advance for that crosswalk if it would speed things up?
Well, we're essentially agreeing to do the construction, do the work ourselves. So we said we would install the light and the crop painted, subject to their approval. So they never, they actually prefer to not take our money. They prefer to let us go ahead and construct it.
Okay.
And I just want to highlight the clarification in that the current storm water pond was built to accommodate both sites.
They typically...
We shouldn't have to worry about all the new parking lot and that pond then not being large enough to accommodate all that impervial space.
That's correct. They estimate what the runoff's going to be from the maximum future development.
Okay.
I'd like to point out that these retention ponds actually are an amenity. As my former employer at Valentine Corporate Park, we had a large, there is a large retention pond with a fountain with trails around it that everybody walks over lunch hour. So it's not a stagnant pool of water with algae and, and mosquitoes.
Will this have a fountain? Oh, that's, that was my question.
No, we haven't committed to a fountain at this point. I think that's part of the process when you're trying to figure out the best way to allocate your resources, but our intent is for that to be an amenity.
Okay.
So one thing that came up in the comparison of buy right versus this project is connectivity ordinances, and so if the board's agreeable, perhaps we should direct our town manager to revisit those connectivity ordinances.
He is our interim town manager, and I think that's something that we can discuss at the retreat and go through the LDC with any adjustments or questions or changes that you would have.
Seems reasonable. All righty, are we ready for a vote, then? All righty. Could I get a motion to approve the conditional rezoning CD 00005-2023? And I will go ahead and state with modifications as presented this evening.
Excuse me, Mayor. I think you already have a motion on the floor that has, hasn't been addressed.
Was it not seconded?
No, no.
It was not seconded?
You have not addressed the, the denial that Commissioner Don had.
So what happens with the hanging? So we'll start with the denial.
So you'll need to handle that motion first.
Very well. So we will go ahead. Can I get a second for a motion to deny conditional rezoning CD 00005-2023?
We don't have, we don't need to.
Very well. Could I get a vote to approve the motion to deny conditional rezoning CD 00005-2023?
Aye. Motion to deny.
All in favor of denial?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Opposed to denial of the motion? So it's three opposed?
Opposed to the motion to deny.
Yeah.
Yes. That's motion to deny conditional rezoning CD 00005-2023 for Atrium Waxahaw with its reasonable and consistency statements that was request is not reasonable and in the public interest as the parcel is adjacent to other existing employment centers, properties, and complementary uses along a major corridor, and it will provide diversity to tax base, and it is not consistent with the Waxahaw 2040 Comprehensive Plan by fur, by furthering the development and employment, of employment centers in accordance with the 2020 Collaborative Growth Strategy. So all in favor of denial? Sounds like we had two to three? Two to three? Jason? Very well. Okay, so that motion has gone through and has failed. So next up, we will get a motion to approve conditional rezoning CD 00005-2023. I'm asking for the motion.
I just need to clarify on these, these modifications, we're just doing the, it's including the 10, not the 12.
Correct, the 10 as presented tonight.
Okay. So it's including the 10, but in addition, it also includes the modifications that the applicant said tonight, that the building will be no more than five feet taller than the hospital, and that the trail, including the pond, will be amenitized.
Correct.
Yes.
And the two that, that were mentioned that the applicant is not agreeable to are not part of this motion.
Correct.
Okay.
Or do we want to clarify that, Blair? Looks like you want to clarify that, Blair. Good? All right.
So motion to approve the conditional rezoning CD 00005-2023 for Atrium Waxahaw with modifications.
Is that correct? Oh, I was reading what's on the screen. Hold on. Motion to approve the conditional rezoning CD 0005-2023 for Atrium Waxahaw with reasonableness and consistency statement, that the request is reasonable and in the public interest as the parcel is adjacent to other existing employment centers, properties, and complementary uses along the major road corridor, and it will provide diversity to the tax base and is consistent with the Waxahaw 2040 Comprehensive Plan by furthering the development of employment centers in accordance with the 2020 Collaborative Growth Strategy with modifications.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
It's three to two. The ayes have it. This motion carries. Thank you, Blair.
Thank you.
Next up, we have leadership reports. Assistant Interim Town Manager Richard Hicks would like to present the...
Mayor, I don't have anything this evening, so...
Fair enough. Next up, Chief Dex Wilson. Leadership report?
Good evening again. So the last month, we've been pretty busy at the police department. We had multiple car break-ins over the last week in Millbridge. I don't know if you've heard the four-wheelers running around, and they broke into multiple vehicles. They actually stole a vehicle that was running in the driveway that was warming up that morning. They left there and then stole a trailer farther down the road. Detectives, through their great detective work, identified two offenders. They drew warrants on both of those offenders, one which is now in custody in Lancaster County Jail and will be extradited back to North Carolina as soon as she finishes her charges in South Carolina. The other one is still outstanding, but, but on the lookout for him, he's been entered into our NCIC network to get him back into North Carolina as quick as we can. Please remind citizens to lock car doors when warming up the vehicles in the driveway. I know we all think it's cold right now, and it is. Next week, it's going to get colder. Everybody wants a warm car when they get in, but make sure the car doors are locked if you're doing that. Patrol has seen an uptick in larcenies and had a few car chases, yielding numerous arrests for narcotics and DWIs. Patrol officers, patrol officer's vehicle was struck by another vehicle while on a traffic stop this past weekend. He was on Highway 75, and a car side swiped his car while his blue lights were activated. That driver was ultimately caught and arrested for DWI and placed in the Union County Bed and Breakfast, or jail. Narcotics detectives made multiple arrests last month for cocaine, fentanyl, and marijuana. Over one kilo of fentanyl was seized over the last month. So they're really doing good taking the fentanyl off the street. It's very dangerous, so we're very thankful for that. Criminal detectives, they've taken out 12 warrants for felonious assault on a female, ID theft, stolen vehicles, and breaking or entering. So they've been pretty busy as well. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you very much for getting that fentanyl off the street. That's a big deal.
Yes.
That's a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Board of Commissioners, any comments? Rochambeau for it.
Nobody?
Reset you?
This is Thanksgiving week, and I hope that we all are thankful for our waking up, going through our daily activities, things that we take for granted in our life that many people do not have. This weekend, as I do every year, I go and I distribute meals to our seniors and those who are less fortunate. I cover 35 homes between myself, my husband, and our family. There are people who are next door to you, there are people who are in your neighborhood who may be by themselves. There are people who may not have what we have and what we take for granted. So if you can, and if you find it in your heart to do so, if you know of someone who is in need, or someone who is by themselves, I would hope that we would reach out to them and just extend a meal, or a thinking of you, or something to let them know that they are not forgotten. So I wish you all a very happy, healthy Thanksgiving with your family, with your friends, and remember to keep each and every one of us in your hearts, whether we agree or disagree. Let's still try and be agreeable, work together, live together, and consider each other. Have a blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Any other comments? Can I get a motion to adjourn, then?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are so adjourned. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you for coming tonight.